Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero. Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Right.
Both Texas apps and members.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I pass their excuse. Pledge allegiance and advocacy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of teamwork. As we come together to achieve a common goal, may we be unified in our thoughts and actions. Grant us the patience to work together, bring us all together as a family, and let us work together with understanding and compassion in our hearts. For this we pray, amen.
Right, item two, proclamations. We have two A proclamation proclaiming April 2024 as Fair Housing Month. We have Cynthia Garza here.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, Cynthia Garza, Director of External Relations. And our first proclamation that we are doing today is for Fair Housing Month. Do we have Mr. Victor? Are you? There's Renee. Renee's here and Victor from our board. Have y'all come up?
Hi.
Hey, are you doing, want to introduce yourself?
Hello. Renee Cantu, Chairman of the Community Development Block Grant Board. Thank you for having us.
Great to have you.
Hi, Victor Alvarez, board member.
Hi, Victor.
This week, this month, we celebrate every year. It's a national, it's an actual event that we celebrate. And the reason we do it is because it's important for us to acknowledge the importance of everybody having the right to fair housing. Every family should have the right to be able to own their own home at all levels. And so, it's a time that we get to celebrate. We bring in our partners as well. This is in combination with our Community Development Week as well, which is another proclamation you all have as well. And so, it allows us to celebrate our families, celebrate the importance of trying to live the American dream by having your own home. And so, we thank you for this time. And do you all have anything you'd like to say?
Just that this partners up with a lot of what's in my heart. I'm the foundation chair for McAllen Evening Rotary Club. And we're looking to do something maybe with FAR also, with the supply chain, with the bridge and all of its efforts. So, I'm proud to be part of this and happy to roll up our sleeves and do the hard work and the due diligence for our community. And especially fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so Commissioner Flores.
Whereas, April is observed as Fair Housing Month across the country. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act recognizes, supports, and encourages the right of every person, regardless of race, color, creed, gender, national origin, family status, or disability, to live in the housing of the individual's choice. And whereas, fair housing organizations and partners will observe the month of April with special activities and events in recognition of Federal Housing Act and the important role it plays in our community. And whereas, in FAR, we encourage all of our citizens to join in this national effort to assure housing opportunities for all Americans in all neighborhoods throughout the nation. Now therefore, I, Itza Flores, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor, City of FAR, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month.
Do you want to do the second proclamation?
Yeah.
We'll do it, okay. Second proclamation, like we had talked about, it goes, it goes hand in hand with Fair Housing Month, and that is the National Community Development Week. We celebrate CDBG Week, which is our Community Development Block Grant. And what this program allows us to do, it allows us to reach further in terms of our reach with our community. It targets specific thresholds. And so, we're able to not only, not only provide funds to local nonprofits through the CDBG program, but we're also able to cover other programs within our actual departments as well. Good examples would be with FIRE, with PD, code and compliance, and so on. So, this week, we get to celebrate this. And so, every year, we always do a community type event that Yudi will be talking about later on, and we'll be doing that. We invite the community to come out, enjoy some cake, moon jump for the kids, and things like that, so.
Join us.
We're good.
Whereas, the City of FAR is a participant in the Community Development Block Grant Program, which funds a myriad of social and public services, community projects, and housing programs. And whereas, the city and in communities throughout the nation, forty-seven years of Community Development Block Grant Program funding has developed a strong working network of relationships between this local government, residents of community development target neighborhoods, and a number of nonprofit agencies which provide services and help make possible our commitment to those neighborhoods. And whereas, National Community Development Week, the City of FAR will give special thanks and recognition to all participants whose hard work and devotion to the neighborhoods and their low and moderate income residents help ensure the quality and effectiveness of the Community Development Block Program. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of FAR, by the virtue and the authority vested in me and on behalf of the Commission, do hereby proclaim week of April one through the, April 1st through the 5th, 2024, as National Community Development Week.
Thank you.
Those two go together, right?
Yeah.
So, you want to get your team up here?
Next, we have proclamation proclaiming the week of April 7th through the 13th as 2024 is National Library Week. We have Adolfo here with the staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Next week, we celebrate National Library Week. Here we have my staff, Catalina, Brianna, Aola, Linda, Mike, and Jerry. These are the frontline supervisors that pretty much get everything done at the library. I would like to recognize them. As next week, we celebrate National Library Week. We, we recognize all of our library employees, and we also recognize our patrons, our community, to come to the library and celebrate with us.
Great. Who's ready this?
I am.
Oh, great.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you for all you do. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity for access for all. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas libraries and accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing, understanding civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim April 7th through the 13th, 2024, as National Library Week. Thank you, Commissioner.
Want to bring your people up here?
Sure, thank you. Anybody for public testimony?
No, sir.
Public hearings?
No, sir.
All right, under City Manager's Report, item 5A, we have the City Engineer's Report. The report's in your halls packet. If you have any questions, Ruben Alphoto is here to answer. All right, item 5B, City Events of Interest. We have Vanessa Soto with Special Events. It's going to come up and share some news with some folks from It's Time Texas.
All right.
Mayor, Commissioners, Vanessa Soto, Special Events. I am proud to announce that FAR took the win again for It's Time Texas Community Challenge this year.
There you go. Good, congratulations to everybody.
And we have some It's Time Texas representatives to present the award.
Wonderful.
Hi, thank you so much for having me here again.
Yes, of course.
My name is Tania Galdepara. I'm the South Texas Regional Director for It's Time Texas. It's Time Texas is a statewide nonprofit that works on bringing people together to make actions for health for now, for generations to come as well. And the healthy action that brought us here today is the Community Challenge. For those who don't know, the Community Challenge is an eight-week healthy action competition that makes people accountable and brings a little bit of a healthy competition, friendly competition, that keeps you motivated to make healthier choices. And so, I would like to recognize the City of FAR for all their amazing work they've done throughout the years. We have, you guys have won four consecutive years since 2021. You guys have won. But you guys own seven trophies, I believe. So, so that means that our partnership has been like in the works for over seven years and maybe even ten. So, I thank you for that. I recognize that, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you and I recognize you all. I would like to show you some of the stats that we have. Some of the meals that you guys logged. You guys logged over twenty-one thousand seventy-eight meals. And some that had fruits and vegetables were fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. You guys traveled over ten thousand one hundred and fifty-seven miles of destination. And you guys, you guys really showed what it is to be a community. How it is to work together and prove each other into doing healthier habits. So, I would like to congratulate you on your first place win to the City of FAR on the medium-sized category. You are now the 2024 Community Challenge winners.
Yes. Every year, we're very excited about this challenge. And I like it because I see all our staff. I mean, they're really who honestly get it done, and they move the community as well and talk to nonprofits. And so, I'm very happy that, I mean, this is their award, right? I mean, so I'm very, again, once again, very proud of you guys. And thank you for setting the pace and leading the charge for the Rio Grande Valley on this category. So, this is a great moment for them. We'd like, I'd like to get a photo, but actually, when we do the photo, I want to do downstairs because I want to get the staff in the photo, if you don't mind.
Of course.
Okay, so we'll do it after the commission meeting. You can hang on just a couple of minutes.
Yeah, we brought some giveaways for all y'all to see.
Good, yeah. So, we'll do it downstairs.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that said, we do have a small reception downstairs for everyone.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Next, we have Yudi with some video recaps, some information.
Yes, good afternoon, Commission. Mayor Yudi Gonzalez with your Office of City Communications. Just a couple of announcements, events that are happening this week, and then a few recaps of events that happened in the last two weeks. So, we'll start with the I Love My Pets campaign. This kicks off tomorrow. And this is part of a pet emergency rescue sticker. I believe I placed some stickers right there, yes. And we're really excited to launch this because we're the first city in the region with an initiative that aims at rescuing and saving our pets during a crisis, emergency, a fire. We just saw on the news last week that there was a fire in San Juan. And I believe when the fire department opened the door, their, their, their pet, you know, was, was dead. So, it's initiatives like this that can really help first responders identify and see that box. Okay, this home has three pets, or two cats, or others, you know? So, we've had a lot of calls over the weekend from residents in neighboring cities actually asking if they can stop by tomorrow and get one of these stickers in FAR One. Obviously, we're not going to turn anyone away, although it has our city seal. But we really encourage them to, you know, talk to their elected officials. And hopefully, this can become a national, you know, or just a region-wide campaign.
Great, congratulations.
Yes, this is spearheaded under Dr. Gutierrez with the Public Health Department, Dr. Cynthia Gutierrez. This event will be happening tomorrow at FAR One. It starts at 10:00 a.m. We encourage all media outlets to come. Residents will have refreshments, and they get to take their sticker. And just, we can really educate them on all of these matters, so. Good job on that. So, our next flyer.
Wait, go back, go back for a second. So, I need you to repeat that in Spanish, though.
Yes, okay. I Love My Pets. Esta es una campaña que iniciamos en la ciudad de FAR el día de mañana. Y se trata de una campaña, de una iniciativa, de una calcomanía. Esta calcomanía se tiene, o bueno, la intención es que los residentes de FAR lo coloquen, ya sean la puerta o la ventana de su hogar, para cuando llegue seguridad pública, ya sean los bomberos, el departamento de policías, puedan identificar que en esta residencia, en esta casa tienen una mascota, ya sean gatos, perros, este otro tipo de mascotas. Y esto puede ayudar muchísimo al departamento de seguridad pública en salvar a estos animalitos que son parte de nuestras familias. Somos la única ciudad que inicia esta iniciativa. Tendremos estas calcomanías mañana en FAR One a partir de las 10:00 de la mañana. Estamos ubicados en el 1121 East Nolano Loop. Los esperamos, tendremos este comida, y tendremos desayuno, y refrescos para toda la familia. Los esperamos.
Yudi, how did y'all came up with this? Who came up with this idea?
Yes, so this was spearheaded through Mrs. Cynthia Gutierrez, as I mentioned, and she can elaborate. This is under the FAR Public Health Department, a newly created department. And really, it was, it was her idea and her drive. Do you want to come up, Dr. Gutierrez?
Mayor, Commissioners, Cynthia Gutierrez, Director of Public Health. I'm here to answer any questions. Aquí estoy para cualquier pregunta o cualquier duda que tengan.
So, your department, Public Health, how do you go about pointing over and? So, do you have pets, animals under your department now?
So, historically, the animal control units are, fall under health departments in every city, counties. And so, we have an initiative where we changed the name from Animal Control to Animal Care Services to give our department that different touch where we are trying to show the community that we care about our pets, that here at the City of FAR, we love our pets, and we're going to make any changes necessary to improve the services that we provide and to make the lives of our pets better.
Is there anything else that your department's doing to help, I guess, pets, other than this sticker?
Yes, so this sticker, this initiative is, as our Public Relations Director, Yudi Gonzalez, mentioned, this is an initiative to help give our pets a second chance at life. When first responders go to a home, very often, the focus is on if, if there's no humans inside. The focus is on, for example, getting the fire extinguished. But if they see that there are pets in there, you know, any kind of pet, dog, cat, or other, they will make that extra attempt to try to save them. And so, the other things that we're working on is we're reviewing and we're working on all of our ordinances for the city and to make them, to update them, and to make them more pet-friendly so that we show the residents that our city loves, truly loves their pets.
Have you done, have you met with the FAR department? Is this the FAR department here?
This is going to be tomorrow, the Fire Department, FAR EMS, and the Police Department are invited as well. I have talked to Chief Gonzalez, and we have sent invites on, to the others, you know, so that it's a collaborative effort. And I want to clarify that although we're going to be launching it tomorrow, we're not going to stop there. It's going to be the beginning. Tomorrow, we'll, we have some to give, but it will be continuous. So, people can go to either FAR One, they can go to Public Works, where currently our Animal Services, our Animal Care Services Unit is housed. And if not, we're going to have some here at City Hall as well, and the other departments that were mentioned. So, to make sure that anybody that wants one can get, has access to one.
Thank you. I know the mayor likes being, we're always the first one doing things. And this is just another example of how FAR is always the first one.
Yes, and, and thank you so much. And we know that not only the mayor, but, you know, I know that some of the Commissioners have pets and love their dogs. And personally, we do love our dogs as if they were family, so thank you so much.
Wait, hold on a second. Why don't you guys just, why don't you just mail it to everybody? And put a QR code that explains it, bilingual, right?
Right.
Why? Because not everybody comes to City Hall.
Right.
Before I was a mayor, I didn't come to City Hall.
Well, I just heard Ms. Gonzalez say, we can put them in the water bill, and we can make them accessible to everyone.
That way, they can utilize it or not. With a little QR code so they can, with a link or something to people. Bilingual, right? So, they understand what it's, what it's about.
See, and, and since its inception, we've had a lot of interest. And we, we joke that if we call people and say, we're saving the world, come over, and nobody comes. But when we talk about, you know, come and get a sticker to save your pet, everyone is calling and wanting one. As a matter of fact, at the All Housers Conference this past week, we had officers from our department, for the first time in the history of the ten years, present at that conference, which usually gets about four or five thousand people. And, you know, we had officers from other departments. And when they heard about this initiative, they, they want to know if they can copy. And, you know, as Ms. Yudi Gonzalez mentioned, it would be great if other cities could adopt the same initiatives as we do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutierrez. Moving on, we have the 50th anniversary. This is for CDBG Week. As Mrs. Cynthia Garza just mentioned, you know, this is going to be a great event. We're going to have many of the agencies available there. This event is happening this Thursday outside of City Hall from 5:00 to 7:00. And once again, we're going to have representatives from multiple agencies like Food Bank RGV, Creative Arts Studios, our Fire Department, our Police Department as well, Health and Code. And we'll have food. Usually, we have games, activities, and we have a moon jump. And we'll have many staff representatives there. This is happening again this Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. And this is also part of the proclamations Mrs. Cynthia Garza just mentioned. The upcoming event, this is happening Saturday. This is April the 6th, is the Holly FAR Festival of Colors. This is the third year the City of FAR hosts this event. Every year, it's been growing. We're really excited. We're incorporating, incorporating other elements this year. So, we're really excited. We're going to have a DJ playing their traditional music, a lot of color. And once again, this is to really embrace other traditions, other cultures that live here in the Rio Grande Valley. And it's also part of a great collaboration we have with the Indian Association of the RGV. We have a lot of Indian communities that live in FAR, and they really use our parks, and they're thrilled to come out and really, you know, start this festival. This festival, the tradition is, this is the beginning of spring. And so, this is why everyone gets a packet of color, and we'll start dancing, we'll play some music, and all at once, we'll throw that powder up in the air. Everyone's encouraged to wear white. That's the whole, you know, idea behind this tradition, that you get to see the color in everyone's shirts, pants. It's a lot of fun. We really encourage everyone to come out here. This is going to be Saturday. Once again, it starts at 11:00 a.m., and this is happening at the Alam and William Park. And this is off of Eldora. We'll have more information on social media. We have Vanessa Soto here. If you have any questions about additional elements that we're incorporating this year. Our last event that's approaching is Paint the Park. This is also spearheaded under the Health Department, and this is to celebrate Earth Day. We did this last year, and so, we'll have people register from different ages. They really want to put, you know, draw, or just paint, or create their artwork in the, in the parking lot by their nature trails. This is a competition. We have first, second, and third place. And last year, we saw beautiful, beautiful art. If you haven't stopped by when this happens, I really encourage everyone to go out there. There's some beautiful pieces that are done, and everybody gets really involved. We also have, we have, do we have Hannah? Okay, we have Dr. Gutierrez if there's any other questions on, on this event. I believe we also have a small promo where we captured video from last year, so we can play that. So, the QR code is now available. You'll find it through our Parks and Rec page. You'll find it in the City page. And we really encourage all those artists out there, or just even if it's beginners, just go out there and, and be part of this growing event. We want to full the entire, we want to paint the entire parking lot. That would be, that would be really nice. Oh, yes, absolutely.
For Earth Day, which is April the 22nd, during the two weeks or three weeks that this event is going to be happening, on April 22nd, we will have activities for sustainability. There's going to be, the public will be able to make a flower or a planter with newspaper and, and take it home. So, that's in addition to the Paint the Park this year, and it's to celebrate Earth Day. And so, this initiative is hitting sustainability, which is something that the city adopted. It's also part of health because it supports It's Time Texas in getting people out there to the park. And also, the, the part of the artistic areas of, you know, the, the well-being of the person. So, just to remind you that on the 2nd at 6:00, there's going to be activities going on as well.
Great.
Dr. Gutierrez on a roll, okay, okay. So, a couple of events that happened.
She's got a question.
I've got a question.
Yes.
It says on here, the QR code painting will take place on Saturday. The nature park, the theme, a list of resources for the theme will be provided. So, y'all are providing white paint, brushes, rollers, and painters' tape and chalk. Anything else that they would need, they need to bring themselves, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And the following videos are events that have already happened. We had great events during our Easter weekend. And so, the first one we want to showcase is the extravaganza. The tradition with the extravaganzas, we'll put out fifteen thousand colored eggs out in the FAR Sports Complex. We had many families this year, and so, here's a small glimpse of the extravaganza this year. We had many families this year, and so here's a small glimpse of the Extravaganza this year.
Thank you, Mayor, for the golden egg.
Thank you, Mayor, for my golden egg.
Thank you, this helps him so much because he is going to a school field trip. Wanted to buy, like, gifts for his brothers, and this helps him so much. And thank you for this opportunity that you do every year for the kids because they have so much fun.
I saw a lot of families, a lot of joy, smiles, the children, it was great. Could see the excitement on their faces, showing their moms, or even showing me their baskets. They were running around, so it was fun and it was good.
So if you saw a couple of the kiddos with golden eggs, that's because our mayor, you know, placed 10 eggs out in the field, and those had cash prizes that he provided from his own pocket, just clarifying that. And so some of these kids were very excited. Their parents were really excited, as you heard a mom saying that, you know, child needed some money for a school trip approaching. So yes, they're really happy about those golden eggs with cash prizes.
Well, thank you. You're always out there with a big smile and full of energy. Thank you, that was very nice.
We enjoyed it, it was a lot of fun.
Of course, yeah. Once again, thank you very much for everything you do. We appreciate it.
Our next video is the Scavenger Hunt. So this event was happening simultaneously. But this event, we started registration around 8:00 a.m. This was, it's something that's going to become a tradition, absolutely. We had 45 teams that showed up to, you know, register, or they registered, I'm sorry, before, and we had a great turnout. So here's a video recap for our scavenger hunt. From south FAR to north FAR, riddles were cracked and golden eggs were found. Forty-five teams took on the challenge in this year's Golden Egg Scavenger Hunt.
They really enjoyed it. This time, we made it a little bit harder for them to find the golden egg.
Harder, but not impossible, as all 10 golden eggs were found. Participants got to discover hidden gems in town.
Overall, that is a smart way to bring awareness to those businesses because not only do you go in and see the place, but also you kind of like have an idea what the business is about.
And of course, inviting all those businesses that want to participate next year to reach out to us or our Chamber of Commerce and make it happen.
Wrapping up the event and the final stop was at On the Grill, ideal for winners and their families to enjoy great food and most importantly, receive their much-deserved prizes.
It was an awesome experience to come out and see all the families and the smiling faces, and so appreciative of these type of events that the city puts on for them. So it's awesome because this is a time for family, and our community is our family.
Until next year, RGV's scavengers.
The ceramic egg, is that what that was?
Yes, so that was the cash prizes. We had cash prizes, and we had the stained eggs that Mrs. Yoli Cantú created.
That's glass.
Yes, yes. She couldn't make it out there, but, you know, she was really enthused to see that everyone got one. So once again, I think this is a growing event. Chamber was involved. Vanessa Soto did a great job in really getting those elements and rotating the businesses that we used last year. So every year, people get to, you know, enjoy other businesses and explore other places.
Great, very nice.
Okay, and this is the last recap. So last week, we had the, we wrapped up our second leadership cohort, and this is spearheaded under Dr. Flores. He started this when he started working for the City of FAR. And these are classes that happen, you know, for a couple of weeks, rotating from different directors. And so here's a glimpse at this wrap-up.
You know, I think that every time that we do these leadership development trainings, we want to make them better than the last. And so I think you're seeing that, you know, we're bringing different presentations, different dynamics to this leadership cohort. And it's all about investing in our people and making sure that they have the tools that they need to succeed.
The people of FAR want to learn about leadership, and they've been very involved in my two presentations here, taking notes, following along. It makes me think very highly of the intent to become better leaders in the City of FAR. The kinds of things that good leaders do can be learned. And so in a city that has grown as rapidly as FAR, there has to be a systematic training effort to help people become better leaders.
And everybody was engaged, you know, they had great questions, and it really shows an interest. And ultimately, that's what you want. Because at the end of the day, this is a generation that's going to push the organization forward.
So it's pretty amazing to see that, you know, with these courses and the growth that we're providing to them, it's going to be an exciting time for the next generation of leaders here for the City of FAR.
The overarching mission of this program is to make sure that our employees are thinking like leaders so that if we have more people thinking like leaders, we can achieve our goal of providing our community with excellence every day.
So we have Dr. Flores here in the audience, so there's additional questions for him. And that last picture you saw were the participants that we had from the City of FAR, from multiple departments in our organization that, you know, took all these classes.
Of course, yeah. Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. Yes, Bobby.
You're going to do continue courses?
Yeah, we do one a quarter. Yeah, so it's just getting as many people that have an interest in becoming leaders within the organization. We typically have anywhere from 25 to 35 participants. And our own directors are the ones that put on the different courses for them and speak about leadership and different dynamics. And then we have two different presenters come from the outside to do one, to do a personality assessment, help them get to know each other better and those metrics. And then another one is a book review on leadership. So just a lot of great exposure for the staff to start thinking like leaders.
That concludes the City Manager's report.
Well, thanks for continuing to do that and for our staff and all those, all of you who are participating. Remember, we've always believed, as Commissioners, we've always believed in your ability, right? And I know somebody, everybody comes from different backgrounds, different, you know, religion, and you bring baggage with you, right? But regardless, we've always seen that our team, Team FAR, right, has the potential to do anything we set our minds to. And all we really need to do is just help you get there at your own pace, at your own desires to get there. But we knew you, and we still do have faith and beliefs in all of you that you can achieve anything you like, and it starts with leadership. But the only thing I would tell you is that, just in my personal opinion, remember, leadership is not, it's not a title. It's not led by, you know, coercing somebody or forcing, or I'm the boss. That's not the way, in my opinion, the way you do it. And as you journey, because it's a journey for you guys, you'll realize that, you know, it's not about white ivory tower. I mean, most people are servants, and they push. They elevate everybody else to get where they need to be. And that's what you guys, I hope, you'll, as one of the pillars you find, I hope you guys will eventually see that. If not, you've already seen it. But hopefully, you'll see that that's what leadership is. Get everybody to grow, and then we want everybody to stay in FAR, but if you don't, it's okay. We want you to grow and become, you know, on go and do whatever you got to do in your profession. But you'll always remember that this, this is where the base was, where the roots were set, strong roots, in here with Team FAR. So congratulations to all of you for participating, and I hope you guys keep doing it.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 6, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Just one abstention for the record, and 6C.
Okay.
Right, regular agenda. Item 7, Ordinance and Resolutions. 7A, Consideration and Action, if any, on resolution appointing one member to the Tierra del Sol Golf Club Advisory Board. And that member will be Niall Ron.
Okay, move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 7B, Consideration and Action, if any, on resolution to accept petition for voluntary annexation, setting date, time, and place for public hearing, authorizing and directing publication of the notice of such public hearing and directing the City Manager to prepare a service plan for the 6.154 acres of road right-of-way situated in Portion 71 Narciso Cavasso Survey, Abstract Number 30, Hidalgo County, Texas, being a portion of South Veterans Boulevard and East Highline Road. Said portion being out of parcel 70B, 70C, 70D in the City of FAR's extra ETG.
Is this about, where are you? Ruben, is this about the trail we're building? Is that what this is for?
No, we're, we're, at the request of the county, we're annexing part of Veterans Road so that we can annex property that's adjacent on the other side of Veterans to the city.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarification.
Ruben, is that to the east side?
Yes, yeah, because everything west is FAR.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussions or, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Chairman, one abstention for the record.
Oh, which one?
On B, what we just read.
Same B, okay, I'm sorry. All right, one abstention. Next.
Item 7C, Consideration and Action, if any, on resolution to accept petition for voluntary annexation, setting date, time, and place for public hearing, authorizing and directing publication of the notice of such public hearing and directing the City Manager to prepare a service plan for 79.022 acre tract of land situated in Portion 71 Narciso Cavasso Survey, Abstract Number 30, Hidalgo County, Texas, being out of lots 47 through 55, and a portion of 40-foot road not in use as shown on the re-subdivision of lots 1 and 5 to 32, inclusive of the San Juan Plantation subdivision located at the northeast corner of East Highline Road and South Veterans Boulevard in the City of FAR's ETG.
Okay, move for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Item 8A, Consideration and Action, if any, on proposed toll-fee increase for commercial tanker trucks at the FAR International Bridge.
The hazmat ones, right?
Correct.
Hazmat, not all trucks, hazmat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Item 98, Consideration and Action, if any, on purchase of decorative perimeter fencing for Guadalupe Cemetery Memorial Park.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 10A, Consideration and Action, if any, authorizing City Manager to enter into a mutual aid agreement between FAR EMS and TransStar EMS. We need on-table this one first.
Motion to on-table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you. And thank you, Danny, for clarifying that last meeting.
Item 10B, Consideration and Action, if any, authorizing City Manager to award a service contract for sludge management services to Denali Water Solutions from Russellville, Arkansas.
Second.
Is there, there's no other local company in the Rio Grande Valley that can do that?
This is one of two companies that have, that are capable, but these are the ones that are the only ones that submit bids for the last 15 years.
Okay, all right. And for a discussion? Are those all in favor? Opposed? It passes.
Item 10C, Consideration and Action, if any, on Amendment Number 4, the Construction Management Agreement, where Brown stole consultants for citywide fiber optic broadband project.
Okay. Any discussion?
What is the amendment, the change order for?
The change order is to extend the contract by two and a half months. There's still some work that needs to be done on this project as there was additional material that needed to be added, which caused some delays along with some permitting issues. So for that reason, there needs to be another two and a half months of...
So by two and a half months, we'll be on the north side already finished?
Correct, two and a half months that, yes. They are on the north side, but they're working through it. That's part of this. Thank you.
Does this include, I just want to make sure, does this include all the RV parks?
No, this does not. This is, this is just the north side and some private neighborhoods that were included.
And does this include the commercial side yet?
Not yet, not yet. We're working towards that.
All right. Any discussion? Are those all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We are adjourned at 4:44. Thank you, everybody.